Oh, no.
Typically, we have a camera, which he typically has on something. Uh, sorry, Bob, you guys.
Are we ready to go?
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't done that yet. I, I would, I was waiting for Charles to get the camera.
Do you have some of them?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, this very, okay. Okay. Uh, welcome everyone to the February sixth. What? Uh, sorry, 10th.
Déjà vu.
No, no. There's a typo in the staff report. It says the sixth.
Oh, so it does, you're right. It was when it was typed, though. It's okay, I still love you. Shut up, Barry.
Feel like Ron Burgundy reading off the Pronto. He reads everything. Sorry, sorry. Joke aside.
That's okay, that was perfect because Matt just walked in through the door.
Okay, so Nantucket Planning Board meeting. Uh, okay, so this meeting is being audio and video recorded. All votes will be conducted via roll call. Um, Zoom attendees must use their real names to help with accurate minutes. The chair or acting chair tonight will be recognized participants. I'm letting you know when to speak, please mute yourself. No groaning and moaning to my left when you're not speaking and if you're not online. Public speaking will be granted three minutes and then one additional minute thereafter. Uh, please remember that this is about the matters of the application we are reviewing and not the applicant. Okay, so now we will do a roll call. Okay. I will start with everyone offline.
Sure.
Dave Iverson.
Here.
John Kitchner.
Here.
In the room, Nat Lowell.
Here.
Barry Rector.
Here.
And acting chair. Uh, President Stephen Welch. Uh, Howard Matz. Ms. Aberdeen Molina. Well, okay. Okay, so Noel Leslie Snell. Megan Trudell.
Here.
Mr. William Saad.
Here.
Catherine Sario. Thank you, okay. Uh, moving on to approval of the agenda, can I get a motion?
So moved, sir.
Second.
Okay. Um, Gary, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Acting chairs, aye. Okay, and at this moment, we will take public comment for items not on the agenda. Do you have any? Hi Campbell, welcome.
Good afternoon, Campbell Sutton. I have probably three or four, but I can't remember what they are. So, the big one I wanted to comment on was the kitchen table conversations. I really enjoyed the ones that I did and appreciated the opportunity to connect with fellow residents. I would say a number of responses I got were, you know, people were out of town, that's sort of the time of year, right? But on the other hand, the nice thing is that you're getting people that are here year round, right? Like, that are working here and, and living here and not, um, flying away when the snow comes. So, so that was one. The other, the other thing I just quickly wanted to say, because I know it's a recent addition, is the one-way on Pleasant Street. So I just wanted, my most recent experience with that was, I was coming home on the day that it occurred and I was thinking about dinner and I thought, I, you know what? I was going up York and I thought, well, I'll just pop over to Gliddon's. And so I was gonna get to the top of York, take a left, and I couldn't take a left. At which point, I was like, go down Atlantic, so I could go down Spark, so I could go over here, go over there, and I was like, well, whatever, I've got food in the fridge. But, so I, I didn't happen to go, so I just, that's just sort of, um, my initial response to the one-way piece there.
Can you write to Mike Burns just what your experience, just, and then he'll share it with me back?
Okay, okay, sure.
Would love as many people to weigh in. We, we know it's a temporary thing, but any input would be greatly appreciated.
Well, I just caught the last part of it at the select board meeting. And I think that's all I can remember for now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. If not, just send us an email. Thank you, okay.
Recording in progress.
Okay. Um. You good to go? Okay, all right, thank you, all right. Uh, did we do the public Zooming?
Yeah.
Last, no, last one.
We have one zoning article on today's agenda that was continued to today's meeting. And that's the, the Visco Citizen article, the zoning map change from Lug 1 to VR, Rachel Drive and South Shore Road. Um, I did have a chance to meet with this article sponsor since the last meeting and he wishes to not pursue the article at this time. He had a chance to go back and, and talk to the neighbors and other affected property owners and they just decided to, um, they don't want to move forward right now. So, what would happen in this case is you all would take a take no action, uh, vote, and then we can include a comment that the sponsor has requested not to pursue at this time.
Okay, I just have in my notes that we did that, but okay, my bad.
We did all the others that were.
I know, I thought that was the one thing we did do and then, okay.
Didn't do this one.
Okay, awesome.
Mr. Chair, I have to recuse on this, so should I just turn off my camera while you guys do your voting?
Yeah, that'd be good.
And then, um, if, just procedurally, this were to be called a town meeting, um, a positive motion would require a 50% vote. So just make sure to note that in your motion, please.
Is this a still open public hearing?
Yes, it is.
This is?
Okay. I'll make a motion to close if there's somebody. You.
We haven't even called it though yet.
No, let me read it to you. Um, now the word, no, I was, I have it in my notes from the last meeting that we voted on this, but. So, okay, so zoning map amendment, Lug 1 to VR, Rachel Drive, South Shore Road, Visco. So now, Nat, if you want to go.
Um.
Well, not that I don't want.
Okay, fine.
I mean.
No, I just. Yeah, I just, I was, I was seeing Billy's head nodding no, so.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, uh, Nat, any motion?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Uh, John?
Aye.
And the acting chairs, aye, okay.
And I'll make a motion at this point that we take no action on this, um, with comments that Megan talked about, as well as just making sure we, we, uh, require above 50%.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Okay. Uh, Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the acting chair is aye and Mr. Iverson was recused, okay. So, minutes, so January 9th, uh, those minutes will be continued. So if I, anyone has any comments concerned regarding, um, January 13th, January 21st, January 23rd, or January 30th minutes? Does anyone have any comments, let me know. Anyone, anyone good? Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved, sir.
Second.
Okay, Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Nat? John?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
And the acting chairs, an aye, okay. Moving on to secondary dwellings, um, garage, okay, I can take all three of these at the same time, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
You can take the garage apartments with it, too.
Yep.
Yep, okay, thank you. So secondary dwellings, garage apartments, and A and R, and I will read them. One, Swift Rock Road Trust, uh, two, Pilgrims LLC at 17 Pilgrim Road, 16 William LLC, care of John Wise at 16 William Street. And I'm gonna put you these and I apologize, Son Channing and Sue Heinan at 19A Waydale Road. And a garage apartment, 61 Shakuma Road, nominee trust, Solomon, um, Uche trustee at 61 Shakuma Road. Lightest Cooperative Incorporated at 7 Crooked Lane, Elma Tahada at 26 Huckles, Huckles?
Honey Suckle.
Honey Suckle, sorry, I get my teeth in tomorrow. Uh, A and R, uh, estate of Charles Gardner, Jacqueline Alders, and John, Charles John Gardner.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, just the secondary dwellings and garage apartments on this one?
And, and take away Waydale Drive, 19A Waydale, that is not moving forward at this meeting, please.
Okay. Okay.
So. So.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we approve, hearing no comment from the board or staff, I'll make a motion, we approve the secondary dwellings and garage departments, uh, with the appropriate findings as delineated.
Second. Thank you. Um, Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chairs, an aye, okay. Um, moving on to A and Rs, uh, but we will, uh, hold on Habitat for Humanity, Nantucket 5, 7, and 9 We Drive. Okay, so reading again, estate of Charles J. Gardner, Jacqueline Allright, and Charles John Gardner, 8 Derry Lane. Richard Joseph Lauter and Jane Lauter, trustees of Richard and Jane Lauter Revocable Trusts at 62 and 64 Sanctity Road. Lafarge Vestal Realty Trust, and Janie Walcott Lafarge and Catherine Lafarge Summers, trustee of 88 Vestal Street. Can I get a motion, please?
Yep, I'll make a motion at this point that we endorse the three plans as recommended by staff.
Barry?
Second.
Thank you, Nat. Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Uh, Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
And John?
Aye.
And the chairs, an aye, okay. Moving on. Uh, preliminary plans, J and J ACH Holdings LLC for Nancy Ann Lane. Hello, good evening, Paul.
Uh, good evening. Thank you for the record, Paul Santos with Nantucket Surveyors. On behalf of the property owner and applicant, uh, J and J ACH Holding LLC, uh, this is an application for a preliminary plan submitted subject to Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81S, and Section 205 of the Nantucket Planning Board Rules and Regulations governing the subdivision of land. The general law and the local regulation, I believe, both state that because it is a subdivision of a commercial property, uh, that it is a requirement that we file a preliminary plan before, uh, definitive plan is submitted, uh, to this board, uh, hence the reason for the application. Uh, the application was submitted to, uh, the town clerk, planning board, and also a copy was provided to the board of health. Uh, property is located at 4 Nancy Ann Lane. It is a parcel, a piece of land, essentially that was within the Richmond development, uh, located in the quadrant between Lover's Lane and Nancy Ann Lane. Site contains approximately 30,800 square feet. It is located in a DEP Zone 2 wellhead protection area and the Nantucket Public Wellhead Protection Area. So moving forward, um, a certificate of water quality compliance would be required as part of the definitive plan submitted for the drainage, uh, system that will be provided on the property. Subject does not contain any regulated wetlands, is not located with any mapped NHESP, um, designated areas, um, areas of estimated habitat of rare wildlife, priority habitat of rare species. Site is not located in a flood zone. It will be serviced by municipal water and sewer, and it will be serviced by an underground electric cable and telephone. Uh, property, as you see it, is laid out as a four-lot subdivision, three buildable commercial lots, and one roadway lot. Uh, in this particular case, we're proposing a 20-foot right-of-way, a 20-foot paved surface to comply with the, um, fire department and state requirements for, uh, an access road. And albeit not shown on this plan, um, there will be a swept plan that shows that the fire department's ladder one can enter the site and exit the site, um, based, utilizing the, the hammerhead or turnaround that is shown, uh, within the, within the confines of the subdivision. Subdivision's in the CN zoning district, um, not that it's pertinent, I guess, to the preliminary plan itself, but this will be a mixed-use, uh, development, which would be providing, um, housing or dwelling units, uh, with a mixed-use, uh, commercial use, um, on the lots itself. Um, any lots that would be permitted within the CN zone would be open, um, to be allowed here, and then we'd also have the, the housing component would also be, be part of the application. Uh, that's essentially the extent of the application. There is no, uh, physical connection between Nancy Ann Lane and the driveway to the north, um, that is on the Richmond property. Uh, that's actually, I believe, a private, that's a piece of private drive area that accesses, uh, via easement, some of the commercial properties on the Richmond property. So, we do not have a physical connection where we could run from Nancy Ann Lane, uh, into that abutting driveway, hence the location of the, the hammerhead or turnaround that we've shown. Happy to answer any questions that you may have. After your review, we would be simultaneously, we'll be coming in fairly soon with a definitive plan, um, for the property itself.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Misses, any comments? No? Anyone in the public, have any comments?
No hands up, I'm line.
All right. What you guys want to do, it's a pleasure.
Just, if I may.
Please.
Yeah, so, what are you kind of planning on terms of accessing the property? Is it just gonna be internal and come off of Nancy Ann Lane?
Yeah, so the, so the, the plan that you see before you there, Barry, you have, you'd be coming, you'd be entering and exited off of Nancy, Nancy Ann Lane.
Yeah.
Again, 20-foot paved way. As you traversed in the site, you've got that turn, it's that kind of a hammerhead, if you would, would. So in an extreme case, you have ladder one coming in there, it would come in.
Yep.
Sweep to the left, and then it's, it backs up and can go, and then it would come out hit, um, come out face forward, so it would not be backing out of the site. I did not submit it as part of the application, but the, what you would get was a standard swept path plan, which would be the track in and track out. And that's the extreme case of a vehicle that would be coming in and coming out. And there would be no obstruction as the road is not be designated for parking. There'll be, uh, buildings on each of the site, and then there'd be specific parking fields for each of the buildings.
Okay. In terms of the four lots themselves, just give me a kind of feel for which, you've said commercial, residential, so let's maybe be just a shade more specific.
Um, well, any uses that would be allowed under the CN zoning district.
Correct.
Um, it could be, it's, I believe retail is allowed, contractor shops, uh, things of that nature.
Mm-hmm.
And then we would have a housing component, whether it be in the lower level or the upper level of the structure. Similar to, uh, the property that you've had before you recently, and that we developed, 21 Amelia Drive is in the CN zoning district.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that particular case was six dwelling units, that was a single building, uh, six dwelling units in that particular case. You had office space, uh, personal services, um, which were allowed in the CN, and then you had the housing, which ultimately, hopefully, the, you know, at least some of the units or part of the units are tied to the dwelling, or they're tied to the commercial use, and it makes an appealing, um, use for someone looking for a commercial space.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, lot sizes themselves, Barry, we're in a CN zone, so that's a 7,500 square foot.
Yep.
It's essentially three lots, one of the lots is the roadway, but Lot 1 would be 8,300 square feet, another one 8,400 square feet, and the others about 8,300 square feet.
So are you looking pretty much, again, I know I'm maybe moving a little forward with things, but are you looking pretty much at just maybe one structure, two structure?
No, there'd be one structure on each lot.
One structure on each lot, okay.
One structure on each lot. And once we start laying out the parking, it may be shared parking, um, because that may be the way, the really, the limiting factor here is, I'm allowed 40% ground cover. Uh, the issue here is putting a structure and then getting the requisite parking on a lot of this size. So there may be a shared parking component, something along that line, but really, the limiting factor here is, is going to be, it's a backwards operation. It's kind of, what can you get for parking, what can we then fit for building and make it all work?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I can't say for the rest of the board, but I think shared parking maybe is not such a bad plan when it comes down to it. It'll at least allow you a lot more flexibility with how, how the site gets developed, I think, in terms of the process.
And quite honestly, on the definitive plan, I may show, like, a building boxes with the parking fields. I think on the definitive layout, it'll give you a little bit more guidance of what we're trying to do.
Uh, something maybe for staff as well, too, I, I don't know, since that's gonna be term day on Lover's Lane with the bike path there. I don't know if there's any prudent, since this is gonna be a residential component to it, um, whether at a minimum, there's a thought about putting at least one sidewalk in there? To be able to interface onto? Because you've got Richmond next door, and then, like I said, Lover's Lane itself has got a bike path going in, um, which maybe, may not be such a bad idea to be able to get people to maybe encourage a little bit more, because once they hit Lover's Lane, you know, to say, they're gonna have the ability to, uh, not be that far away from an RTA stop and stuff as well. Then you're gonna have school kids as well, too, again.
Yeah.
So, that, it might be a little food for thought on that one as well.
I mean, I, I would assume you'd, I mean, I know on Hinsdale, there was a contribution that we had made as part of each of the, it was a similar situation, and we made a contribution, in the board, whatever they saw fit to assign as a contribution, I think that's probably the way this would probably go.
Yep. And then I think, you know, once we hit the definitive stage, there'll, there'll be a little more that'll start coming out about what the site'll look like and what are we looking at for what's gonna go on internally within the, with each one of the lots as well, too, so. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So Paul, the one thing I have a question is on Lot 2, you have front yard setback of 10 and then rear of 10, but then Lot 3, I see you have front on Nancy Ann, Ann, but I don't see a rear along the side to match. You have to have the 10 attended, because you back up to each other.
Well, essentially, on a corner, essentially, on a corner lot, I'd, I'd confirm these with, with the building inspector and Marcus, but on a corner lot, you're allowed to designate one of your streets as front, the other would, then the other would be the side, but really, on a corner lot, you don't really have a rear.
No, that's all right, but I'm just, for the definition, when someone sees that.
We went round and round on that, but, uh, it'll depend on how we lay the building out and stuff.
I, that's my interpretation, but I, for the public, that's what I wanted, thank you, put in the record, okay.
Question?
Yeah, please.
Well, what's the reference to the Richmond Great Point? It just looks like there's a little sliver of land, and it's also labor, labeled evergreen trees, I'm just curious.
I, I don't, that, that's, that is, that is a strip of land between 4 Lover's Lane, which 4 Lover's Lane is where the rental, um, business used to be, and then you have, um, uh, the lumberyard, I think, is it, um, at the corner of Lover's? It's just a strip of land there, when, for whatever reason, they left a small strip, I think it's about five feet or so between the two properties.
Okay, I'm just curious, especially if at some point there is residential use, depending on what happens on the other side of Nancy Ann Lane, and of course, the pond on the corner. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else? In the public? Okay. No? It's a pleasure.
So, Mr. Santos, do you think you've got enough to start at least feeling?
Oh, for sure, yep, yep.
Okay.
Again, the only reason, I know the preliminary, sometimes we do the preliminary, you know, on the residential, sometimes we do the preliminary, sometimes we don't.
But with a commercial property, we're bound to do, we, under the statute, we have to come here first. Thank you. So.
Nothing that I wasn't expecting, so.
What's that?
Nothing that I wasn't expecting.
There you go. So I'll make a motion at this point, is that we approve the preliminary plan, usually that takes the form of a letter detailing some of the things that we've talked about today. I think the chair usually signs off on that as well, too, but I think that's the only prerequisite right now, if my research has been correct, Megan. Anything else that we should be doing now?
No, I mean, you'll, you'll hash out all the details at the.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, I get that.
Yeah.
So there's my motion, sir.
Thanks, sir, can I get a second, please?
A second.
Thank you, Nat. Uh, Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Uh, Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chairs, an aye, okay, thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, previous plans, are we on going to, was that?
Yes.
Oh.
Yep, so previous plans is just an endorsement of the, um, of the MCD that you all did for the two lots over in the Van Gilder subdivision. So the, um, the applicant has gone back and forth a bit with Ed Pesci to address all comments, and those plans are now in good shape to go ahead and have you all endorse them.
Okay, perfect. Anyone want to make that motion, please?
Sure, I'll make a motion to endorse.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, second.
Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chairs, an aye, okay, perfect, thank you all. Okay, public hearing, uh, 6A Marble Way LLC, 8 and 10 Marble Way has been, uh, requested for withdrawal without prejudice.
So has, uh, 19 Waydale.
And that was my next one I was gonna read, so 19 Waydale has also been requested to, for withdrawal without prejudice. And then, should I do the continuance all at the same time?
Uh, let's do the withdrawals separate, if you don't mind.
That'll be my motion for both 19 Waydale and 6A Marble.
Okay. Can I get a second? Okay, Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chairs, an aye, okay, thank you all. All right. Moving on to continuances, I got 21 Amelia Drive LLC, 21 Amelia Drive in Quapin LLC, Old South Road. 11A Old South Road and a portion of 109 Old South Road. And that is continued to 31025 Old South. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion to continue to May 10, March 10.
Thank you, Nat.
Second.
Thank you, Barry. Nat, any motion?
Aye.
Barry?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chairs, an aye, okay, thank you, right. All right, on to public hearings, we are going to take, uh, Habitat for Humanity, Nantucket LLC, we're gonna take 5, 7, and 9 Way Drive altogether, and Mr. Brescher is here, welcome.
Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Chair, for the applicant attorney, John Brescher, representing Habitat for Humanity, Nantucket Inc. Uh, I, yes, I, I think it makes sense to take 5, 7, and 9 Way Drive altogether. Please tell me which one you'd like to start with first, or if you'd like me to go over the entire project in general.
You, you're leading quarterback.
All right, you got it, sir. Okay, so, uh, what we have here is Habitat for Humanity received title to the property of 5, 7, and 9 Way Drive from the town to provide affordable housing for local families. Uh, so we'll start with 5 Way Drive, which is the property on the far left over there, I believe it's, uh, 88A and 88B. Uh, that property, what, what they're doing is they're going, uh, we're requesting a secondary lot, uh, special permit, so that they can have two single-family dwellings on the property. Um, in addition to that, they're, uh, for 5 Way Drive, uh, they're also requesting, uh, da-da-da-da-da, the, uh, the waiver, um, the, uh, setback, setback waiver, because you can see the, the access on both is, uh, closer than, within the five feet. Uh, I asked Leo for the measurements, he suggested we just do it at, uh, zero feet for the, for the time being. Um, and that we are going to have a, uh, and there'll be, uh, parking provided on this site, and, yeah, for, on 88A, you know, uh, 88B will have parking via an easement on 88A. Uh, so 5, so 5 and 9 Way Drive are sort of mirrored. So it's the same general idea that 9 Way Drive, again, will have a secondary lot. So it's the same general idea that 9 Way Drive, again, will have a secondary lot special permit request for two feet simple lots. When we were discussing with, this with staff last month, we started talking about 7 Way Drive, which is the one in the middle, and this is a proposed duplex. And the reason the duplex is before you, as you can probably guess, the parking up front. And so, we decided to hold off on the applicant, on the public hearing for 5 and 9, so that we could come before you for 7 Way Drive for a, a request for, for the dimensions of the driveway, seeing as we're providing effectively a rectangle of, which will include 5, 9 by 20 parking spaces to service the, service the duplex. And so, we're trying to have, we suggested doing all, all three of these applications at the same time, so you have sort of a better understanding of how the site layout and configurations will go. Again, it's all to be used for affordable housing. I know that we have, I know that we have in here conditions relative to income on, on the, on 5 and 9, and that's fine, we say that's, I believe the standard is 150%, Habitat's closer to 80% AMI, so they're, they're incredibly affordable homes. All the other conditions that the staff has suggested on these applications are certainly fine with us, and so, I'm here, and members of Habitat are here to answer any questions you may have in this time.
Okay, thank you very much. Board members, any thoughts, comments this time? Is anyone in the public?
No?
There. Mike Burns has his hand raised.
Excellent. Mike, I'm mute, and welcome.
There it is. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question to Mr. Brusher of the existing curb cuts that are on a way drive, if those will be impacted at all?
Through, through, Mr. Chair, yes, they will, and Leo Azadorian, who's been the engineer and the surveyor for this project, has been in touch with the DPW about relocating those curb cuts, and has been in more communication with them about where these, where the new curb cuts will go. And we, and we understand the engineering and the impacts of that, and we'll work with the town accordingly.
Can I add, that's a suggested condition in all three of these decisions, that the applicant continue to work with the DPW and town administration, and should there be any damage to the existing infrastructure, that the applicant knows that they'll, they'll repair that to adequate quality at their own expense?
Okay. All right, that's acceptable. Nat, did you have a question?
No.
They got put in, not, I know, it's happened, look at them all in Nausia.
Yep.
There's tons of them, stuff like that. And they're probably set in cement, so that's makes it even more difficult.
True.
Okay. Howard?
It's hard to tell from your drawing and the scale, but I wondered, is there really enough room for someone to use the parking spots back up, turn around, get out through the curb cuts?
Through, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I believe that they meet the code, and I, it may be tight, but that's, that's the intention. I mean, there, space, space is at a premium here, and we all know that parking is a concern, and so this, this is the intended layout to sort of minimize parking difficulties, if, and access difficulties, if that, if that makes sense.
Yes.
It does, but I wonder, I, I don't know how wide your alley is, whether where utilities to be relocated is, but I'm wondering, do you have the luxury of pulling the spaces down towards 7AB, so you can get some more footage there, and people can turn around? Hate to ask you that, but...
No, it's, it's, it's a good question, and I would, I would say, at this time, I, so, the nice thing is, in all of this, that although they are going to be deeded to Habitat homeowners, Habitat intends to have their own sort of internal homeowners association with this, and so that if, as sort of the construction progresses, and the use continues, and, and, and the properties are being used in such a manner that will dictate or necessitate a modification or an easement, they're all sort of in control of this, within the homeowners' association, so there is, sort of unlike the, no pun intended, nothing is set in stone with this, so it can be modified and altered. If they determine in the next, you know, call it year, once the families are in there, say, gosh, we really are having trouble here backing up onto weight, or we could use some more roof or turnaround, I think there's willingness to, on our end, to modify the plan, whether it be through easements or through altering, altering the layout of the driveway in some way.
I, I'm not sure that this is an easement issue. I, I don't know why, at the onset, you just don't check to see if there's enough room there and do it right from the get-go. Because it looks like you have plenty of room on Lot where 7A and B are, but I can't tell exactly to, to give yourself more space in the parking lot. You're not, people are not going to be able to turn around there.
My apologies, which, are you talking on Lot 89 or 88?
I'm talking about the five spaces.
So we're talking, talking on 89?
Right.
So, and, to, to, to shift the parking to the, to the...
No, just pull it to the bottom of the picture, a few feet, toward the word 7A and B.
I think that, I mean, that's, that's fine, the only thing is that it eats up green space, and that's the only, that's, that's the only trade-off.
Yeah, I think you just need to think about the fact that you may need to do that, and what that means.
Anyone else?
To try and help, I've been trying to overlay, there's another, hang on a second. This one has all the crazy lines, but this one might be easier to kind of get the idea on.
That's on our pack.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, if, if it, if it helps, we are fine to extend that parking on 7A and 7, or down further, and that's, that's, if it helps, that's fine.
Yeah.
I don't think that that would help, if you don't mind me piping in, and the extent of the waiver request is for the expanded width and the curb cut, that utility easement is also a sidewalk that's currently constructed, and I think that if you were to push those parking spaces forward, it actually wouldn't help with backing out, it would just create a gap between the sidewalk, you know, just more gravel space that could encourage illegal parking, that could be problematic when there's pedestrian traffic there, and it would also eat up valuable green space, which is limited on this particular site.
Kim, but do you want to speak?
Yeah.
Joe, I have one other. Are there five units in the 7B building, 7A, 7B?
Two.
Two?
Two, so you have five spots for two units, so you probably could turn two lots on either end and have plenty of space. Turn the, turn your parking around and put four, four spaces rather than five. And then you wouldn't have to have the problem of pulling away from the curb mark.
Well, also, so 7A and 7B are, is a duplex, those require up to four spaces for both units, whereas the, the two residential structures on the opposite lots, and the relief before you today for those are for the creation of secondary lots, so the ownership could be transferred. Those are, only actually require one space per unit, per the zoning bylaw, but I think, you know, that in practice, maybe, isn't enough, and they'd like to provide more. Those parkings require to be on-site, so it gets a little, it gets a little bit tricky, so that it's not a shared cross. Is that what you're talking about, Howard?
No.
You have five spots there.
Yep.
Right. And they're perpendicular to the road.
Right.
If you turn them, and you put two on one end and two on the other end, and get rid of the fifth one, you probably have enough space to turn around.
I see what you're saying.
Okay, I see.
That's all.
I fear getting rid of any parking spaces, to be honest with you.
What was that, Dave?
I fear getting rid of any parking spaces, because I just think that, you know, our bylaw is woefully inadequate when it comes to parking in these kind of situations, so although they have to back out, which isn't necessarily the safest, they could always back in, I, I just, I'm scared to lose another parking spot, and, and I fully understand his point of view, but I just, I worry about even losing one parking spot.
Action Chair?
Yes, please.
Dave, what do you think about Megan's comment?
Could she repeat it?
Did you mean about extending the length?
The space between the curb and the...
So I think that would just encourage illegal parking to block those vehicles in with overcrowding, and then it would also, at the same time, eliminate the little bit of green space that, that they do have there between the parking and the structure.
I would agree with Megan on that, I think. I might, it, it's, it's tight, but I, unfortunately, the price of, of property, and, and it just, it, that, these are the struggles with creating more affordable housing, is that you need to maximize your use of the space, and how far down is this? Is this where the parking is across the street? Meg?
No, it's, it's a bit farther down from that, it's right across from where the housing Nantucket units are, leading into like six fairgrounds area, correct?
Down at the very end of the lot, where they, where they were starting construction last month.
It's right towards, so at the entrance of Way Drive, I think there's one or two homes that have been developed, and this is right, right beyond that, so it's closer to the intersection of Tacoma and Way.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah. Yeah, I just, Howard, I understand what you're saying, I'm just worried about where that extra person is going to end up parking.
Oh, Dave, I totally agree with you, I'd hate to lose the fifth spot, but...
Yeah.
But having drawn parking spaces before on drawings, I don't see the curve, the ability to, to get into the spaces if the curb cuts, I don't know where the curb cuts are going to be exactly relative to that, maybe that would work, I don't know.
Okay. Barry, do you want to go ahead, and then?
I can wait a second if you want.
All right. So the one question I have is, you have 5F down below, could you do a 9F on the other side, or is that C down here? Could you match that on this side, or what's the...
There are utilities there.
What's that?
Utilities.
Oh.
Yeah, that utility.
Oh, I see it in this one, the transformer, okay. I just didn't know on the opposite side of 9F, if that could be there, where the R5 note is. And then that maybe would free up a little more space in the front for, if, to Howard's point, or, or guest parking, something, all right. Barry, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, so, let's get creative for a minute. Would there be anything to prevent that transformer easement to going into the back of the property as opposed to the front? First question. Not the easiest thing to access, but realistically, how often are you accessing a transformer system? I'm just, I'm curious, what, what's driving it being at the front over as opposed to the back?
I think it's a combination of logistics and cost.
I'm sorry?
I think it's a combination of logistics and cost, that it's, that it's...
But what, what are we looking at, really? Okay, so logistics. Cost, I mean, what are we looking at with those two things? Rough ballpark, I mean.
Mr. Chair, may I interrupt on that?
Please, I, go ahead.
Because I've got some experience doing site development with this. The problem without knowing, John knowing this, is that if that's an end run, the cost is sim, is cheaper, because if you've got to shorten it up, you can shorten it up, but if it is at a cross, you've got to extend lines to the neck, to two transformers underground and shorten it up. So the point is just, it's, it's difficult to know without knowing.
Okay, all right. No, no, that's okay, I, I appreciate some insights on it. So, all right, I give up. So on 5A and 9A, the little protrusions that you have, mark WW, just help me out. Are they, I'm trying to figure out what that exactly is. Yeah, that, exactly, what, what am I looking at?
Window wells.
Window well.
Window well.
Yes, sir.
Help me to understand architecturally why they need to be there of all places.
Probably for egress.
Probably for egress?
Get out of a dwelling or just like, natural light ventilation.
Okay.
Yeah, these, just, I want to point out, these are, Barry, you may know this, but they're existing structures, so the bedrooms are already in place.
All right, no, I'm sorry.
Probably have egress ladders there.
No, I'm just thinking, if they weren't there, boy, does that maybe address a few issues in one clean shot.
Yeah, seeing the architectural, I'm seeing ladders.
What's that?
In the architectures, I'm seeing what would be delineated as a ladder or some egress form to get out of that, window well.
Got it, and these are, when I see under construction, are these already constructed, you said?
Yeah, they're too far.
They're doing well, they look good.
Wait, no, we're there, I haven't been out there in a bit, sorry.
That baby's born, kid.
There you go, okay, well, thanks anyways, thanks for playing next contestant.
All right, anyone else?
If I may?
Please.
I'm just, I don't know, I mean, Meg had said it, your site, the park is required to be on-site. It's unfortunate, because in a situation like this, given its location to the wave and the shopping and so on and so forth, that the easement couldn't be utilized where the sidewalk is, not suggesting that in this instance, because we'd be two parking spaces short, if we, even if we utilized the 17-foot ones, but it would open up, especially for these affordable housing type situations, it would open up yard space for people to be able to utilize road parking, that's pre-planned, tarred, a curb cut, no sidewalk, but there is a sidewalk on the other side, and all of a sudden, you've got, you know, several hundred square feet of yard space for kids to be kicking a ball, or for a shed for a scallop brake and stuff like that, so, just a thought for future planning. Our future planning.
Thank you, Stephen. Go ahead, Nat. Just real quick, I mean, those, back on that, 7B, whatever, five spaces thing. Those are 9 by 20s, and if I'm looking at it right, people are going to pull in there, not everybody's vehicle's 20 feet long, 20 feet is a suburban, 19 feet, like, eight inches. They're going to back into those spaces, they're going to pull, and then they're going to back in. But people, not everybody is super skilled, but that is how that'll end up working, if everything goes, like, the best way, they're not going to, like, loop around and then have to back out. They'll be able to back in. I'm not concerned about those spaces, I mean, because they're so long, that the vehicles aren't going to be out all the way, you know what I mean? You have one vehicle out of how many will be that long, so I think it'll find its own way, and it'll fix itself once people figure it out. That's a pretty big space to... Huh?
Just going to have people drive over the curb.
Over to the curb to where?
To the street.
Why are they going to go over the curb?
Because you can't presume that, that there's never going to be a long car in, in any of those spaces.
Well, no, but I know they're not going to be longer than 20. I mean, there may be 21 that's a little, you know, eight foot...
Well, I don't know how much space he has there, but it looks like he's got five feet, maybe.
Okay, I mean, yeah.
Because if you break that 20 into two, it's smaller than, than, than half of that, the parking space, so maybe it's seven feet.
That line across is just for the whole width of the whole space, that's not... That dash, red, dash line up there?
Oh, I'm not looking at the, at that, I'm just kind of getting an idea of how much
space there is between the depth of the spot and the street curb.
So...
You must know, right? You've scaled it, haven't you?
I mean, I, it looks to me, sort of roughly, that sidewalk is 10 feet, I think, versus existing.
It is 10 feet.
Yeah.
And then on the architectural, it has a red dot, which is going to remove the existing curb cut, so that's going to be wide open. But I, I don't even see, I don't even know how anyone would hit a curb at that point. Yeah, I mean, listen, you'll do it once and say, I don't want to do that again. But, yeah, I, Harold, I mean, Howard, it's a good question, but I just think that, that Habitat will run, you know, they'll be watching, monitoring, and then if there's any things, they said they would make tweaks to the plan, but I think that, you know, it's, this is not going to be a hit and run, so to speak. But, I, I understand your question, but I don't think that's going to be the problem for a problem.
Together, yeah.
Which, it should be anyways. What's the right thing to do normally, we're not, all right. Shut my audible sigh off. Thank you for swearing, see that.
So I want to point out, the applications for the secondary lots for five and nine were actually applied for last month and I had a chance to discuss with John that, you know, well, I guess he could have proceeded with those at those ti, that time, you know, the waiver required for seven, it, it's better for you all to look at everything holistically. So that's why all three are before you in, in this one conversation today.
Thank you for doing that.
And dare I bring up something Dave said about that parking on Wait Drive up the road? That's like where those vehicles came from, I have no idea, but they're, they're there. What was the original plan for that? I know that there was, part, part of it was for, for Tacoma Green spill over a little bit. In my opinion, that that will also flush itself out as these projects could get down the road, there's going to need to be use of that for the people to actually live there, you know, at some point, some way. And I, I, I think that that will take its own shape, because that's under town control, right? So.
That is, and if Mike's still on, I know he's part of the group developing the overall parking plan for this area with, in collaboration with Chief Casper and, and the police department. So he may have more intel than I do about the intent and what, you know, deliverables may pan out there in the near future. You know, I think just as an observation between the lot being closed for staging, for the construction of the dormitory and then overflow parking from Amelia, I think that has added to the, the current.
Surfside, I know. Yep.
Mr. Chair, yeah, Mike Burns has his hand raised.
Okay, Mike, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to clarify, yeah, there is a, well, now that the, the parking regulations were approved by the SLIT board, there is a, a Wait Drive residential parking permit that's, in the books, I, I got to say the details of that, the number that are going to be issued, that's yet to be determined, is just the ability to issue a Wait Drive residential parking permit is there. I think we need to do a little bit of diligence to making sure that we have an inventory of parking in the area that's suitable for what's being built out. There was a little bit of a, of a strategic plan, I guess, or a preliminary plan done for this whole corridor. I just want to make, don't want to, I want to make sure that we don't oversubscribe the parking, because that'll run out very quick.
Okay, thank you, Mike. All right. Anything else? Campbell? Sorry to make you wait.
Hi, thank you. One of the things I was going to bring up or ask about was what Nat was just asking about in terms of available parking within a reasonable walking distance of this, this complex. So, thanks for getting the information on that. I, I look at these five parking spaces on seven and I think of Acc Dental Art, which is, I think, on Pine Tree up by the airport, right? They've got those, five or six, just like this, right? And, and you back in and out of those, she has people coming and going and I don't believe that's an accident-prone area. I think where this is located, truck cars are going to be going slowly enough when they turn on to Tacoma, or from Tacoma on to Wait Drive, that I don't think we're talking about, you know, forty miles an hour going down Wait Drive and then hitting this situation. The other thing is, I think if you remove one nine-foot spot and, and turn your parking the other way, I just don't think that that creates, you know, what is that, a five-point turn if you're the inside vehicle to try and back out and, and come out? So I sort of appreciate this plan because it's something that, you know, the pedestrian will be able to see is happening, the traffic going by, we'll see what's going on. And I think on Nantucket, we still have a lot of people that are courteous in the whole driving habit and they'll stop to let people back out or back in or however that goes. And, and I also like that front area being the green space that's in front of the duplex so that if by chance there are children in this, they at least, they can go outside the door and be on a green space instead of into a parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, okay.
Anyone else? Good, satisfied?
Yeah.
All right, make a motion?
Make a motion at this point that we close the public hearing on, do you, Meg, do you want these done separately or all? We can batch them.
I think you can do them all together.
Just wanted to be sure that there was, there was nothing that was going to go the other way at that, okay. So I'll make a motion at this point, we close the public hearing on these three.
Thank you, Barry.
Second.
Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
And John?
Aye.
And the chairs and I, okay.
Make a motion at this point that we approve the three applications with all the findings and conditions that we have discussed up to date so far and those have been, that have been included by staff as well, too.
And, and working with DPW?
Yep.
Yep, yes.
On the curb cut stuff, yes.
Okay. Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And acting chairs and I, okay. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Thank you.
Thank you all, good to see you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to 111 O R S LLC, 111 B Old South Road. Who is stepping up for that, Megan?
Mr. Brecher, again?
Oh, John. Excellent. Bring us home, kid.
Thank you. For the record, Attorney John Brecher, representing the applicant 111 OSR LLC. I believe Ryan Maxwell is also online and I think he may be able to answer some of the more technical questions that we may have. I know that there were some, some of those technical questions, well, let me, let me go back. So that what, what we have before you is an MCD application for mixed-use commercial structure. It's going to include office space and contractor workshops and two second-floor apartments. We needed, and, and we had some questions last time that were on the engineering side relative to green space, I believe, and we presented and we, or excuse me, we supplied additional information courtesy of Bracken Engineering and we sent additional stormwater calculations, I believe, to Ed Pesci, or, yeah, I said to Ed. And I believe he had a chance to review everything and didn't have any, and I think his comments made it into the packet. But I believe that we have addressed everything that the board was asking for last time. And as I said, Ryan's here, Ryan's online to answer any of the technical aspects that you may have, but at the end of the day, it is an MCD for the office space contractor spot, contractor shop and apartment.
Okay, thank you very much. Brian, do you have any to add right now or do you want to wait to get comments?
No, I'll just wait and take questions if there are any.
Okay. Remember thoughts, comments, anything? All right, we'll go to the public. Anyone in the public? Emily Molden, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Emily, for the Nantucket Land and Water Council. I think I saw this in the information in the packet in the staff report, but just to confirm that the applicant is now proposing to meet the twenty percent open space requirement.
I believe that's right. Ryan, can you confirm that as well?
Yep, that's correct.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, and thank you, Brian. All right, anyone else in the public?
No hands are up online.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we close.
One more thing, Mr. Chair.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, we're fine with all the conditions that were included.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brecher.
So I'll be back to my regular motion to close the public hearing then.
Okay, thank you, Barry.
Second.
Thank you, Nat. Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
And John?
Aye.
And the chairs and I, okay, thank you.
Make a motion at this point that we approve the application submitted with findings and conditions as to noted therein.
Awesome, thank you.
A little bit identified by staff as well.
Second.
Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chairs and I, okay, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to other business, planning board meeting, a special planning board meeting, excuse me, Thursday, March sixth at four P M., remote only. And then the last meeting for this, oh, sorry, regular meeting, will be March tenth and four P M. and that will be a hybrid. So just FYI, anything else? Anyone?
You're here in your hands, right?
Thank you.
There we go.
Sorry, we'll jump back to that one.
So I'll make a motion at this point that we endorse the Anna Harris move.
Second.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you, Barry, thank you, Nat. Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Chairs and I, and thank you, Catherine, for that catch. Okay, anything else? Anyone? Anyone want to sit around for a little while?
No.
Still daylight? Is it daylight out there?
All right, well, can I get a motion? I know Mr. Saad can't make it, but I love his enthusiasm.
Let's make what? Make, make a motion. Sure, and none too soon, too.
Okay, Barry made the motion.
Second.
Nat, okay, thank you. Barry, yeah, Barry, any motion?
Aye.
Nat?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye, Mr. Chair.
John?
Aye, Mr. Acting Chair.
And the acting chair says aye. David, still miss you, kid.
Oh, you know, only one regular scheduled meeting left and then I'll be back.
I'm sitting in ice packs, I don't want this chair to get warm.